I just disappeared, no.
Something happened. Oh, there it is.
You want to leave that though?
It was me.
So, counsel, any questions on agenda review or anything that's on consent?
Uh, is this, uh, hold on, how do I, uh...
I don't know if you have any questions on the agenda or anything that's on for consent action tonight? No?
Mayor, can you hear me, Tim?
Yeah.
Okay, so I was thinking that the appropriate spot, like, you might want to turn it over to me if you don't mind, just for like two minutes, is under your mayor's business and add a new item D, city manager update. So, we would just move my update from the back of the business to the front, and I will just give you a high-level overview, more for our citizens and folks that might be watching than for you, because I've been giving you a daily update.
Yeah, okay, let's see, I, uh...
Because then we're going to get into a whole lot of discussion about what we're going to be doing for businesses, so I want to focus a little bit of conversation on what we've been doing to keep our employees and our residents and our businesses safe and healthy, too.
Okay, I can do that, under mayor's business, yes.
Thank you.
Anything else on agenda? If not, why don't we ask then councillor concerns on anything? Anything at all in the society you have concerns about?
I have a councillor concern, I don't know if anybody else does.
Councillor West?
Um, like many of you guys, it's been an unprecedented time, and we have, over the last couple of weeks, been, all of us, including city staff, has done quite a bit of work to try to navigate what we're all kind of experiencing with COVID-19. And I've had some, I had a lengthy conversation with Joanne Lindvill, just kind of sharing my perspective a little bit about the lens I look at this through. And as an RN, as a nurse, I always immediately go to assessment, and then, looking at the situation, we kind of go, I'm looking at it mostly through like a triage lens, and it kind of informs my decisions on how to react. As an RN, we look at a patient in a triage moment, and we assess the situation, that assessment allows us how to prioritize, and then allows us to dictate or to help with interventions and treatments that are necessary, and how to get the patient back to homeostasis and stability. And as I, I keep going back to my training when I look at this situation as a nurse, and the patient right now is Wilsonville and our neighbors and our citizens, and I feel like that the city and our patient is hemorrhaging. It's hemorrhaging jobs, economic loss, mental health, stressors, it's hemorrhaging, and all of the cities are at risk. And how do we look at this situation as a council and make, through a new lens, as things have dramatically changed from the middle of February when we were talking about completely different things? And it's, to me, it's what lifesaving measures are we going to have to take to protect economic, to protect Wilsonville economically, and to protect Wilsonville's future? And so many hard decisions are coming before us, and so many businesses have emailed all of us, and so many people have reached out, and privately, some of them have really shared their concerns and their fears, and some of those conversations are very emotional and difficult to have. And I went back, because there's a thought, we did it all the time, but I don't know if you always read it, I went back and I looked at our mission statement. And it helps kind of maybe be a guiding star in these kind of difficult times. And I'm going to read it really quick before I go on, because I think it's important for us all to remember the mission statement as we discuss these things in work session and in our council meeting. And our mission statement says, for Wilsonville is to protect and enhance Wilsonville's livability by providing quality service to ensure safe, attractive, economically viable community, while preserving our natural environment and heritage. And I underline there specifically, because a lot of what we're going to talk about today, and I know we've been working on this, is economically viable, being company staying and being economically viable is a hallmark of who we are. And I, I, my questions I want to pose to the council are this way, I think some austerity measures are going to be necessary moving forward, but there's some information that we need first as a council if we're going to look at those austerity measures due to COVID-19. And I wrote down my questions here, and it says, what estimation, what was the estimation of reductions in revenue that we're going to have because of COVID-19? We're going to, if our businesses severely suffer, we lose a percentage of them, that really impacts our payroll tax. So what financial impact is that going to have to the budget and to smart moving forward? And this is not a quick recovery, I believe this is something we're going to have to be prepared to endure on, even after we all start to get back to work and be busy and go back to normalcy. What future financial impact are we going to have? The property taxes as this rolls downhill, skyrocketing unemployment is already happening across the country, jobs that used to be there may never be there again, people losing businesses, and then the mortgage or house or user savings to have those businesses, those businesses aren't coming back. Real concern about the viability and the livability and how that impacts our budget as a whole is really concerning to me. And I think now is the time for us to really initially start planning and getting prepared for that, and taking those austerity measures. But during a time of crisis, I really feel like that we don't have the money to spend on luxury items. We look at the patient, it's like, what's going to keep the patient alive? What are the priorities, and what's the framework that we need to work on? What are the critical systems? And then that's where the allocation of funds have to go. And we don't have maybe, I don't know, thinking of a couple of luxury items, pedestrian bridges, how is funding for West going to be impacted? The Parks Bond now, we're just working on that, I just was the chair of that task force and excited of what we're going to present to you, but now I'm really questioning that goal that we had about a Parks Bond and how to bring that to reveal. There's some luxury items that we have been able to work on that I'm really concerned that we can't make a priority any longer. And I guess I want to encourage the council to ask the finance department to sharpen its pencil, and to look at how we're going to be impacted potentially, future, in the future, from the city with payroll taxes and property taxes, and where can we look to start making those potential cuts? And what is critical, and how do we handle that moving forward with the budget? And so, some of those questions before we can even do that I know have to be looked at, I know there's some funds that are protected statutorily, contractually, they're already funded grants, I get that, but that's not all our funds. And I think now, it's not a fun thing to do, and I, and I don't like necessarily bringing it up, but I think it's time that we have to look in that direction towards austerity, and ask Kathy Roddick and her team and the finance department to really begin to look at ways that, to show us what those forecasts look like, so we can make really informed, smart decisions and avoid making decisions in haste, because in a crisis, that's when mistakes are made, and really being logical and planned out moving forward and thoughtful with the budget moving forward, because I think that the benefit we've had recently have been a strong economy, and there's some really scary things looming around the corner that is going to hit us. So that was my councillor concern, is, I guess I'm, maybe, I hope the council would join me in asking maybe the finance department to look at those future impacts to our costs, and our, and our, for cost and our, and our financial forecast. So, that's, that's my concern, and something I wanted to share with you guys, that's been kind of on my mind.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else would like to speak at this point?
Yeah.
Councillor Lindvill?
Um, well, I, I guess I have some good news and some bad news. In the community where I live, we have 1,500 homes in Charbonneau. And while we don't know everything that's going on with every neighbor, this is one of the few communities in Wilsonville where we have a directory that has everyone's name in it, all the residents, all their phone numbers, all their email addresses, all their cell phones, if they're willing to give them and would like them published. So it gives you the sense of the kind of community that is out here. We, we found out today that we lost one of our citizens to COVID-19. And every, we also know that at least one of our citizens was transported to the hospital with pneumonia and, over the last weekend, and has been treated and has been released, and now is home recovering. So, we have a little good news and we have a little bad news, but, and I don't know about, within the city of Wilsonville, what our neighbor's situation has been. I know that the cases in Clarkmouth County are obviously smaller than those in our neighboring counties, particularly in Moma and Washington County. But it's, obviously, it's of concern. I have seen our neighbors and people out here doing some really incredible things in maintaining their social distancing and trying to create a healthier environment. I, I don't, I don't know if there's anything more from what we can do in terms of that social distancing. I know that Representative Neuron's going to talk about what is going on statewide, but one of the things that was a little encouraging, I did not hear numbers today, but over the weekend, our total numbers of new cases per day were in the, in the mid-eighties. And as of Sunday, it was down into the mid-sixties. So I am hopeful that that represents trend, and that we will continue to see that down, downward turn in the state of Oregon in terms of the number of cases that, that we see. So, I mean, I know that all of our, our retail areas that are open are doing a really incredible job, and I think now that we've gotten word that people who are out and about should be wearing masks, I think that we will see more of that. So, and I know that we're going to be talking more about some of the economic issues and strategies, and so I will leave my comments to that in, when we get to that discussion.
Hey, thank you, councillor. Anybody else?
Do I raise my virtual hand or...
I see, I see your actual hand, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to say that I agree with both the previous councillor's statements, with councillor West, that particularly that we need to be very considered and not act in haste, to do something that would limit our ability to respond to community needs going forward. And, and also, while considering all the many needs that we have to take care of. But also, I, that, it was very disturbing to hear we had lost someone in Charbonneau today, and, so I think still our primary focus has to be stopping the virus. That has to be the, the number-one priority always, is, is what can we do? Are we doing enough to, to slow down the movement of this virus and, and turn things around to check the citizens of Wilsonville? And everything else is, comes secondary to that, but, but understanding that we have a lot of people who are hurting in many different ways in our community, and, and we need to be considered in how we approach that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I just want to update my comments, because I received a new email. Over the weekend on Sunday, the, the number of new cases was 69 cases, it's, the number of new cases today is 64. So, that's two days of a downward, down from the mid-eighties, and so I think we need to be optimistic. There will, we'll continue to see deaths after our cases start to get over the apex and starts to move down, there will still be, unfortunately, there will be deaths as people are, are trying to recover and are now hospitalized, so, but I'm, I'm optimistic that there's a chance we're on the way down.
Well, I hope you're right. Originally, I saw projections that the peak ought to be somewhere mid-April, but more recently, I have seen projections that indicate that while that is true for Washington State, that Oregon is projected to peak even later, along about the first week of May, I think. So, I think that we have to be very cautious about, uh, prematurely saying that we can ease up on things, I think, to maintain strong positions. With regard to councillor West's comments, I, I understand and agree with the level of concern. I have very strong concern about the needs of individuals and families in our community, especially after hearing reports of food banks in some of the more hard-hit areas suddenly having 200, 300, 500% increases in their, their patron demands. I, I don't want Wilsonville to be caught flat-footed in a situation where we're unable to help respond if that in fact happens in our community. It probably, I don't think we are at the peak yet, and I think that the potential for the cumulative effects on families and individuals are still to come. I want to be cautious about that. I also want to impart my perception that part of what the city can do is to continue to support employment and business throughout our community, and part of how we do that is to not just stop cold on our capital improvement projects, that we try to keep moving forward on those, that we are positioned to do so, and that we have set up, and that we can continue to employ people and employ businesses in those, those projects as a way to help keep money circulating in our community. And obviously, it's, it's a balance kind of a question, it's not something we can do all of one or all of the other. And we'll have a good discussion about this when we get into the main meeting here. I guess I would ask Mr. Cosgrove if he wants to add anything at this point, and we know that you will have more discussion when we get into the big meeting.
Yeah, just a couple, couple points on budget, that's top of mind for everybody here at City Hall. And so, you just need to know that all department heads have been directed to provide me with packages for reductions. I'm not going to get into the specifics, but we were, we're tracking all of that, revenue projections, all that stuff that we need to be looking at, we are looking at. The budget message will be different this year than it ever has been before. We don't, forecasting revenue at this point is, would be like trying to read tea leaves. We don't know. We're going to make some best guesses on property taxes, on utilities, and every other form of revenue we get. The other thing I want to say is that every department is funded a little bit differently, so the impacts for every department are going to be a little bit different, depending on the impacts that the revenues that are funding those departments have. So, it's going to not be a shotgun approach, it's going to be a surgical approach. We'll look at each department and try and make our best guess, but we'll have packages ready to go if we have to go down that road. So, all that discussion's been going on for weeks now. So, we, we don't really, we like to hear that our council's thinking about that, but you need to know that we've been focused on that from day one. The second thing I will say is that, I can finish and then you can go if you want, councillor West, or I concede to you if you want. Okay, you're muted anyway. Okay, go ahead.
Councillor West, there you go.
Please finish, and then I'll jump in.
Okay, the other thing I want to say is that in terms of capital improvement projects, those funding sources are all dedicated revenue, so SDCs can't be used for business support. I would echo what the mayor's saying, the more we can get capital projects coming into Wilsonville City Hall and pushing out building permits and bridge projects and any other project we can get out the door, all those contractors that are coming to Wilsonville are going to be eating in our restaurants, getting gas at our gas stations, shopping at Fred Meyer, so the multiplier effect on capital projects is significant, and it has multiple policy objectives in terms of what we should be looking at. So I've directed my community development staff to be aggressive in getting projects out the door, inviting projects to come in the door, so if we have a difference of opinion on that, now would be a good time for me to hear from you. So I'll see you now, back to the mayor.
Councillor West, you had your hand up?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess my ask today was somewhat what Brian said that he would look, is doing, and will look at doing, but in the next council meeting, I'd really like to have the best forecast that we can have, and also looking at reasonable, and, so we can make reasonable decisions on budget issues and reducing those costs of things that we should not be focusing on luxury items. I, if, and, I mean, I just off the top of my head, and last time I spoke, mentioned a few, but there are luxury items that we just, it's inappropriate for us to really focus on. If a bid's already received and we already have things, the ball rolling, that's one thing, and I think we'd all agree on that, but if that process hasn't happened yet, and we need to be very careful with our pocketbook, just as every single person around the kitchen table is doing right now, and having to really tighten that belt loop and to really be cautious, I think we should do the same thing, and we should, we should prepare for the economic downturn that's glaring us right in the face. And some of those construction projects are luxury items, in my opinion. And so I guess my ask was is to get some type of financial direction and, and an estimate from Kathy Roddicker and her, and that department, so we can look at some of those tough decisions across the board and surgically, but I think it's something we have to really consider right now. I think it's what our citizens expect of us right now, is businesses face closing their doors, we have to be creative with the funds we have, and we have to really focus on the things that are critical, and the things that aren't critical, it's inappropriate for us to focus on those right now.
Okay.
So, it's like there may be a bigger discussion to have here about what the council considers to be appropriate in this environment, or not appropriate in this environment. Mr. Cosgrove?
Yeah, I don't see any practical way to do what councillor West is asking me to do. It's almost like he's asking or, or promoting an idea where we come to you with a pre-budget before we come to the budget committee. The problem is, we've already developed our budget, we have strict guidelines that we have to meet for public noticing, for the state government, for our budget committee members. What I would recommend you do is just hold off on this discussion until we get to the budget committee meeting. We'll have a lot more information, we'll know a lot more about this virus and how long it's going to last when we have our meetings. Doing anything now would just be reactive. I would prefer to be strategic and proactive, I understand his concerns, I, as a city manager, have those same concerns. So, I think I sent you a daily update early on, saying that your council goals are basically gone. I didn't mean to say that they're gone, but I'm saying that the priorities are shifting more towards emergency preparedness, so the Parks Bond is not something I would promote that we even go forward with at this point. If those are the kinds of discussions you want to have, that's great, but what I would do, what I would recommend you do is you wait till you get your proposed budget, then we sit down and have a conversation with the rest of our citizen members and talk about what is a priority. Because I could sit down and try and please four or five of you, and then we get to the citizen process, and they don't agree with you. So I think doing it outside of the budget committee process is not something I would recommend. However, if, if you agree with councillor West and you want us to do something in the interim, I can do it, I just want you to know, I don't have a lot of capacity to be doing any extra work right now, and neither does Kathy. I just want to be straightforward with you on that.
Counsel, how do you feel about the city manager's proposal that we plan on having this discussion at the budget committee level? I'm seeing a couple of nodding heads.
I have a question.
Councillor West?
What's the timeframe on that? And if we, as a council, say we need to find a percentage to cut across the board in every department on funds that aren't allocated or tied up in some way, statutorily or contractually or whatever, what, I mean, we, we just need to have some idea about what, as best we can, what that future looks like, and some data before we make that decision. So are we going to...
I don't, I don't mean...
And that's kind of what I'm thinking, is that, my, I guess, what's that timeframe for the budget committee, and then they get back to us, and that, I mean, that's, that seems slow.
So, here's what I will say. You have, you hired a city manager to make those tough decisions and to bring recommendations to you. That is in process right now. So I would recommend that you wait until I get all those, all that information gathered from my city departments, that we not prematurely just start cutting programs and services, because, well, I'm not an economist, I've been hearing a lot of different things about how long this is going to last, what the impacts are going to be. We have time to make smart decisions, we don't need to jump the gun and make tough decisions right now that will add to the misery index for other communities where our city employees live. So just cutting just to cut right now is not something I would recommend.
Do we have budget meetings on our calendar yet?
You certainly should.
Yes.
And remind me if someone can, when, when those start?
Kim is going to look it up, I'm pretty sure it's May.
Yeah, sometime in May. So, a month roughly out, by which time probably, I, I guess I would expect that the emergency situation will have evolved some by then, and we may have a little clearer picture whether we're at a peak or, or on the downside, or whether we still have those problems yet to come, which would be helpful. I'm, I'm seeing, I think, a consensus that that would be the way we should do things. Councillor West, is that...
I wouldn't want it any later than May to start really having these tough conversations. I, I, you know, I think that you can take a fine pencil to any bureaucratic governmental budget and take some percentage off across the board and find room in the budget to be more fiscally lean.
We've already done that, we've already done that.
I know, and I'm not saying you're not, I'm just saying, as a council, I think that that's, being involved in that process is important, and understanding what those are, and moving forward with the budget process, I think all of us being involved in that process in May is super important. And I'm not, and I'm not trying to, I don't want to go after any specific projects, I don't want to go after any specific department, but it would have to, I want as equitable process as possible, but I, but I just, I, yes, I want it to be done in a very prudent and responsible manner. I don't want to make a bad decision in a crisis, as I previously said, I don't want to push something in the wrong direction, but I want to have that conversation, and I want to be included in it, and I want to understand what's going on, what we're really doing, and if it's enough. And, and if May is kind of that timeframe, and in those council meetings, I'm okay with that, but I wouldn't really want it to linger and not understand directly kind of like what's happening and where we're at, because I know that that's an issue that not only we are going to face, but most municipalities and state governments even, and hers is looming, and, I mean, there's all these things looming, so I guess that's my mindset.
All right, the budget committee process with our council in conjunction with our five citizen members, I think would be a very positive way to have those dialogues. We, of course, have to, by law, have a new budget adopted to go into the new fiscal year by July 1, and I'm sure that staff will move us on a track that will enable us to do that. Councillor Lindvill, question?
Well, I just wanted to make a comment. I, I know that our budget, and mind you, I've not been through the city budget process in the, in the past, so this will be my first time through, but with, with experience that I have previously had, you know, your budget is obviously... But with, with experience that I have previously had, you know, your budget is obviously your best guess of what your revenues are going to be and you, you determine expenditures based on that. I, I would anticipate that even if the budget was sent and approved by July, we won't necessarily know the reduction in the revenues until those start to get into quarters for us. And that, it would seem to me that it would not be unreasonable for a budget cuts or budget reductions as those figures become clear, would come to the council for approval. So I don't, I don't think of the budget necessarily as the promise that we're going to spend all that money. So it seems to me that there's an opportunity to do budget cuts either quarterly or mid-year if we get to that place. And I, I would agree with Counselor West that it, my guess is it will become apparent to us that, in terms of prioritizing issues for that budget development, that we will have the opportunity to have some input into some of those priorities that are beyond service, you know, beyond kind of maintaining service level. So. So I, I would feel comfortable with knowing that we would be expected to do budget revisions later if the need would arise.
I just want to reiterate that every department is putting together several different scenarios that we would bring to council as a recommendation if that became necessary. That work is being done right now. So we would make a recommendation based on what we think in terms of what programs and services we're providing right now and at what level we could continue. Along with that will be coming, depending on how severe those cuts might become, a reduction in service levels. So that would be an obligation for us to explain to our citizens and business community that we're no longer providing this level of service, now we're providing this level of service. So that's why I wanted to be thoughtful. That's why I have everybody engaged in the process so that we can give you the best information, and we'll bring that to you at the appropriate time. But I do think, from a budget standpoint, it should all be done in open public hearings where people have a chance to comment, because somebody's ox is going to get gored here, multiple oxes, and you want to have people explain to you their feelings about that. So the best place to do that is in the Budget Committee process.
Thank you. Counselor Akervall, have you had your hand up and I overlooked you?
But it's okay. I, I just want to, I mean, I echo, everyone here is concerned and for very rightful reasons. I wanted to provide a little context too, because, you know, as Counselor Linville said, she hasn't been through a budget cycle or those meetings. And Counselor West, I don't know that you actually were able to attend any of the meetings last year, so you might not be as familiar with the process. But while we are in a, in a tough, tough spot, our Budget Committee is a good group of caring and careful citizens that, you know, come together with councils, who are very much involved in this process for the Budget Committee. And they do a tremendous amount of research in the information that staff provides to us. It's very thorough. And so I do have, I do have some faith in, in that group working with these difficult decisions, because I've seen that be a very high-functioning group in the past. And while we have very, very significant challenges right now, I just wanted to provide that, that context of, of what you might be able to expect from the, the budget process and that there is a lot of opportunity for, for public comment and also for discussion and for further information from staff, too.
Hey, Mayor, we have another hour and a half of work session to get through. So I appreciate there's a, there's a lot of discussion to go on this and I'm happy to have more, but we really need to get to the agenda.
Okay. Counselor Leehan, have her hand up also, maybe something quick?
Yeah, it would be something quick. I, I would just like to say that I agree with the approach of the city manager, that we need to be careful and involve the Budget Committee. And what I would say about austerity is that austerity, for the sake of austerity, can often be counterproductive, that the city does provide, when, if we, if we tend to call all our infrastructure projects luxury projects, the city has the opportunity to be a moderating economic force by keeping those projects going that, that contractors are already committed to, that we already have people working on or planning to be working on. And, and it is, it is a moderating economic force to, for the city to continue to go forward with those projects that makes sense. And, and I look forward to that further discussion with the Budget Committee.
Thank you very much. Why don't we move on to our scheduled items then? First one of which is looking at alternative project delivery methods, which are, is germane to the capital improvement discussion. Do we have Ms. Kraushaar with us, is that right, or Mr. Hickman, or both?
Both. We are here. Hello, good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Nancy Kraushaar, I'm working as an engineer for the city. And I'm here with Tom Hickman, who is the current Chief Executive Officer for Twelton Valley Water District. Brief introduction, many jurisdictions throughout Oregon are increasingly implementing what we call alternative delivery on projects, mostly on capital projects. And they've shown these alternative delivery methods have shown to improve project outcomes that could relate to schedule, innovation, contractor qualifications, collaboration between a city designer and a construction contractor. It can provide scope flexibility and sometimes cost savings, sometimes a better public outcome. And there is some risk assignment that needs to be carefully considered in these alternative deliveries. However, why we're here tonight is we are looking at using one of these, as you may recall, the, the water treatment plant upgrade is using one of these methods, which is the, what is it, the one? It's the construction, oh, CMGC, Construction Management General Contractor. And we're looking at also for the Beckman Dip Bridge Project to potentially consider one of these, and we thought it'd be really helpful for Tom, who has a great amount of experience with these types of delivery for contracts, to come and speak to you so that you'd get somebody else's perspective and, and some information from him on how these work. So with that, I'll just introduce Tom, and I welcome, I'm so happy he was willing to spend some time with us tonight. I've also spent some time with him, and also Barbara Jacobson, our city attorney, has had the opportunity to meet with him and one of the engineers from the Willamette Water Supply Program. So, Tom, thank you for being here.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and Council. So I'm going to mostly be talking about my prior role that I had before I came to work for Twelton Valley Water District, and just a little bit about me. I am a licensed engineer in both Oregon and California, and oversaw the CIP for the City of Bend for nearly a decade. I was the Director of Engineering and Infrastructure Planning for the City of Bend. And what was happening there at the time is a lot of rapid growth, as probably many of you are familiar with. And we had a lot of projects, we had a long track record of projects that both ran either long in schedule or over budget, and we also had a lot of projects that took a very long time. And it was frustrating for the elected officials to be talking to their constituents about wanting to get a project done, and, and projects could easily take a decade or more to really get moving. And so it was that, the, the city council for the City of Bend asked me at that time to look and explore ways to deliver projects faster. And so with that, I brought alternative delivery to the City of Bend with the intent to expedite projects, but also to have better cost controls over those projects, so we knew what we were getting into at the start. So I've used alternative delivery on water, sewer, stormwater, and transportation projects. And all of those, almost all of them, were multidisciplinary projects, meaning it wasn't just simply a water project or just a transportation project, there were many other elements related to those. And then up to last year, had done more progressive design build and other alternative deliveries than any other entity that, public entity that I was aware of in the state of Oregon. And when I was at the City of Bend, we were constantly being reached out to by many other jurisdictions about how we were doing this and just trying to understand. So hence, this presentation, I've been asked to speak about this now a number of times, including at conferences. Just to give you some ideas, some of the projects that I've done, these are just a few of the bigger ones that I did in Bend. We did our water supply project under using CMGC, which is one of the delivery methods that Nancy just spoke about. We did a Murphy Road Corridor project, this was a multidisciplinary project. We did this as a progressive design build project. And this, that project is still underway, and, but we got that up and going before I left. The same with the Empire Road Corridor project, the Southeast Sewer Interceptor project we did with a different type of alternative delivery called Best Value. And then we did the, the North Sewer Interceptor project and did that as a progressive design build. So those are just some of the more significant projects, but by no means all the projects that we did using alternative delivery. So alternative delivery, like a lot of things, has become something that people throw around without a lot of understanding what it is. And so I'm going to give some definition here to this and talk about some of the biggest lessons I've learned in using alternative delivery. First and foremost, was working closely with legal and purchasing to address their concerns. And as an engineer, we can often, I feel comfortable criticizing engineers since I am one, so, but we, we'd often view the world rather myopically and see the problems only through our lens, and I can tell you, the concerns that legal and purchasing have using alternative delivery are no less important than the engineering challenges. So I, it was something in the City of Bend, I developed a very close partnership with legal and purchasing departments to help get those done. One of the other things that I made clear to the city council there, and I would caution all of you, is to understand that if you want a lot of public input on a project, you really need to do it early. You can have public input with an alternative delivery, but it comes with some restrictions. And it's a quick way to lose control of cost and schedule. So you got to think about the level of public participation you want to have, what kind of sideboards do you want to put on that before you actually launch on any alternative delivery project? And then once you've decided to move with alternative delivery, you need to think about really empowering your trusted staff for quick decision-making, because it does, the way it works, in order for the contractor to make money, they need to move quickly. So staff needs to be empowered to make decisions. At the same time, the, whatever process that needs to be set up for council approval, that needs to be thought ahead of time. So what dollar limits are put on those? You probably already have those. And if the dollar limits are low, I expect as a council that you're going to see a contract in front of you a lot, repeatedly. And while that can be good, it can give council a sense of control, can also be very confusing to the public, because the public keeps seeing this same contract coming before the council for approval, and their view is, is well, the cost is going up. And that's not necessarily true, it's just you're proving, you're approving different sections and elements of the contract as it moves forward. The other part I wanted, a big lesson that I've learned, alternative delivery is not necessarily a cost savings tool. It can be, but it's really a team coordination tool that can result in cost savings, and a big caveat, maybe. You don't, I would never tell somebody, "Go do alternative delivery because it's going to save you money." That's not a true statement. It could be the same, it might be more, but I can tell you it'll be faster, certainly. And then traditional delivery methods of design bid, build is not necessarily the lowest cost. This is something, this is kind of a myth. I've, I've phrased it, and I think a few others have picked up on this, that it is the lowest initial offering, and it almost always has change orders and creates the highest amount of conflict with the contractor. So doing the traditional design bid, build, the more complexity, you're almost starting out in a fight with that contractor, and it typically gets worse as the project goes on. And then, design bid, build is the poorest delivery tool for complex, multidisciplinary projects. So if you have a big, complex project, I would argue, design bid, build is really not the one you want to be looking at. So real quickly, what are the different, this is very high-level, alternative delivery, I use this as a decision graphic, I have now used this with the TVWD Board, and we've actually brought it forward in the Willamette Water Supply Project, where we're now doing more of this type of stuff. And so this doesn't encompass all the different types, there are entire books out there on alternative delivery, they're a couple inches thick, but this gives you the high level. And so on the very left-hand side of this, what you can see is the, the vertical axis is the speed of the project, and then the bottom axis is the complexity of the project. And so if you see the design bid, build, it's slower, but it's great for not a very complex project. If you look at the top of that graphic, you can see where the risk falls. So you can see that design bid, build, the owner's risk is high, but the owner's control is very high. So you can implement change orders, you can, you can do a lot of things with that one. It, it's, it has flexible, there's flexible elements of it, but it's all at the owner's risk, your risk. As you move along to the right on this graphic, you can see there's, there's pre-qualification, then best value, CMGC, and then progressive design build, and that graphic keeps going. And you've done, actually, some of the other ones beyond the progressive design build, I think you've done a design, build, operate. I believe you have that under your belt. That's one I personally haven't done, but I've done all the rest of these multiple times. And what I, what I've learned is, I, I need to sit down at the start of the project before you actually ever get to a point that you're going to hire an engineer. You need to sit down and ask yourself some of these questions about, well, what kind of public input do I want? How long do I want to have it? Do I know, you know, what do I want to do as far as a project? So if there's a lot of uncertainty in that, you're not going to be at the progressive design build, and you're going to start going towards the scale of where maybe pre-qualifications or best value, and potentially design bid, build, if you have a lot of things you just haven't answered for the project. But if you know a lot of the things, let's say you've purchased right away, you know you've purchased that, you, you're not going to change that alignment, that removes a lot of public process, that removes a lot of other variabilities, so now you're, and there's other complications with that, you might want to start looking at progressive design build. So I'm hitting on these on a very high level. You have access to the rest of this presentation that also hits on each of these at a very high level. But I, I think what'd be best now is if there's any questions by the council, I'm, I'm happy to field those questions. any questions by the council, I'm happy to field those questions, or any from staff that could help you out.
Thank you, Mr. Hickman. This is a very interesting topic, and we certainly have some major work ahead of us for the city in the long run. Council, do you have questions you would like to ask at this point? Let's try to keep it sort of higher concept, not try to get into individual ones. We don't really have much time to talk about individual projects.
I guess my presentation was that good.
Counselor Akervall.
I will say, thank you. On the last page of your presentation, not the one that you've just shown now, but the one that was included in our packet, which I think goes on to a little bit more further detail. Let's see, I believe it was the slide that says Tom's worldview at the end. You made a couple mentions of the importance of having legal staff onboard, and potential risks of, I think your last bullet, when you throw out a bullet like that, you know, you're going to get some attention. So one lawsuit, and you'll wish you thought through this approach, or you know, something. I wonder if you could just give a little bit more information or context on what we can learn there.
Yes. So I wish I could tell you, over my career, I've never had a failure, never had a project failure. I have. And certainly, I've had failures with design bid build. And what I mean by failures is where either the schedule or cost of the budget got out of control. And so, I've unfortunately been through a couple different lawsuits along those lines. And probably the most significant one was with the city of Bend, where at the time before I had taken the role, a decision was made to go with a low bid on a wastewater treatment plant expansion, and a very complex project. And within a month, we knew we had serious problems on that project. And it never got better. That project, which was supposed to be done in two years, it's still not done to this date, and that project started in 2011. So we just won, in fact, the very last thing I did as an employee for the city of Bend was win that lawsuit. But I can tell you, working with the legal staff, it took a huge toll on all of us. And the amount of money that we spent in legal fees, in mediation, in arbitration, it was huge. It was, that did not come cheap. So not to mention how much it took up staff resources. So when I say, you know, on that particular one, it's a good example to use to say, there should have been more thought given upfront, to think about the complexities involved. And one of the reasons why they chose to go with design bid build was because they said, we're just in too much of a hurry to go through all the process to do any other delivery method. So they didn't want to take that time to do that at the time. And, you know, as I told you, they wanted it done in two years, and it's still not done to this date. So that's an example. But I've had a CMGC contract also go sideways on me. So these aren't panaceas, this isn't, none of these are magic bullets. It still requires really good project management to stay on top of them. And, you know, contractors are clever. They know these, they have their own attorneys. And most contractors we deal with are good people, they're honest, they're good businesses, but not all of them. So that's kind of my caveat that comes with that last bullet.
Okay. Thank you for sharing your learning with us. Thank you.
Well, we could probably talk for quite a while about this. We are on somewhat of a timetable here, and I'm sure there will be future discussions to have about this. Is there any final comment that staff would like to make on this whole overview idea of ways to approach capital work?
Well, I might just speak up that we've been trying to approach this from a very cautious standpoint, really doing our research. I've already been working with Ms. Jacobson on possible concerns that our attorneys will have. And she's contacted the city of Bend attorneys and gotten some example contracts. We are not ready to select a method. However, as we do move forward with the Beckman Creek project, we're going to be trying to hone in and give you guys a recommendation. And certainly, at that point, if you have a lot of questions, we're happy to do as much research as you like.
Okay, sounds good. Appreciate you coming in front of us and giving us this background. I have had the chance to tour your water treatment plant in Bend and ask a lot of questions. And I know that it was quite an amazing project and has had a great outcome. So congratulations on that, too.
Thank you.
And I know the council would like to thank Mr. Hickman for taking time out of his evening during a pandemic to come and give us a presentation. It's deeply appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I can tell you, my board and staff were wrestling with the very same issues you guys spent the start of this meeting on. So
Budget, budget, budget.
It's tough, you know, trying to figure out these challenges we face.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you a lot.
With your permission, can we flip, actually, we're just going to move B to the regular meeting because we have a public hearing, because we only have 30 minutes left. And I have Ms. Rybold here, and she needs direction from council. We think we found the sweet spot on this equitable housing. What?
Sorry, Mr. Cosgrove. B, there's two parts to B. There's the Beckman Dip Bridge Alternative Analysis and the Stormwater Master Plan Amendment. And the Stormwater Master Plan Amendment is scheduled for the public hearing.
Okay. So I still want to get Kim on right now, so that we can make sure that she's got direction she needs for planning commission. So we'll do, if you're okay, Mayor and council, we'll do equitable housing now, and then whatever time we have left, we will do the other.
All right. Sounds good to me. Anybody? We good with that? I'm seeing a thumbs up. All right, let's go.
Here we go.
Talk about C on our Equitable Housing Strategic Plan. Ms. Rybold?
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I'm going to skip the slides that I had. You do have them in your packet. But really, I just want to come here after our conversation we had last month. We talked a little bit, I think we got a little bit, maybe too into the weeds, about some performance measures. And so, I really just wanted to take this time to bring the group back to the high level of the framework document that we're working on. And really, just get a confirmation from you all tonight that the general framework in which we've been working, to really help shape some of the future work that we want to do, to address some of the issues of housing in the community. Just really get the group's confirmation that this is the framework we want to get forward with. And then, if you have any additional input in terms of prioritizing some of those actions that we've been talking about in the plan, that will help us. Our primary goal is to start working on a final draft plan. And that is what we would take forward to public hearing. But we want to make sure that we've gotten enough of your input and are ready to do that. To, I think most of the information and the questions I have were laid out in your packet. The big pieces are, we want to make sure that we recognized a lot of the questions that were asked last month, and acknowledge that we don't feel, based on input we heard, that everybody is ready to define a specific list of measures or metrics we want to track. But that will be a part of the continued conversation as we go forward in implementing actions that are in the plan. So the two key questions I have for you tonight, do the actions that are in there, as presented, make sense in terms of what we should be tackling in the near term? And when I say near term, this is really in the next couple of years. We know that we have a couple of the actions in there, particularly related to missing middle housing, as well as future equitable housing strategies in new urban areas that we will be working on in Frog Pond and with our House Bill 2001 work. But I think, you know, the elephant in the room here is the crisis that we're currently in, and that does affect housing. And, you know, we need to be ready to respond to the needs that we have in the community. And the framework we have is intended to address a number of areas, both with homeownership and rental. And we recognize that we will need to be flexible as we implement these actions. But we just really want confirmation that the information we have is ready to go back, so we can begin preparing that final draft. So with that, any additional input you have on prioritization of those actions, as well as funding sources, I know that's kind of the other sort of uncertain aspect, but some of these affordable housing activities will require additional funding. There are some tools available that the city could explore, in particular, construction excise tax, which the group has discussed in the past. That is noted in the draft plan as one of the potential funding options. And we just wanted to get temperature as to if this is something we should really begin pursuing in the near term, or wait for your further direction. So with that, I will welcome any additional input, discussion, or questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. So in order to focus this, I'm looking at page 11 of the draft, which is Section 4, Implementation Actions. It's on page 65 of 167 in the packet. Does that kind of set forth a overview of the actions, or would you want to direct this somewhere other than that in the draft, Ms. Rybold?
I think my page numbers may be slightly different, but
That's an electronic packet.
So Implementation Actions is Chapter 4. It has, you probably can't see this, but there's a table with two columns. I think we're in the same place. So yes.
Yeah, page 11 in the draft, I think.
Yep. So really, we're focused on the left column, which is making sure that when we have a plan that we implement it, that we know, aside from the couple of items that we already know we're going to be working on, just really a temperature of what else the council would be most eager to have us pursue from the get-go.
Okay. That's kind of a wide open statement, the last one you made.
Well, yes. And maybe you're not ready for that. That's just direction.
Is the council ready to add any input at this point in response to what staff is The, I think it's helpful, just a sec, Counselor Linville, in a sec. I think it's helpful for staff to be clarifying that some of these uncertainties will be worked through a public process as we go forward, which will help us probably focus a little bit more clearly on which actions the community really has priority for. But certainly, council will be interested in seeing what happens in that process also. Counselor Linville, did you have input?
I just wanted some clarification. And I know, Mayor, you had mentioned page 65. And I don't know whether we're, are we, are we being asked to respond to the implementation, the ones, the ones and twos that are listed on page 166, actions, the actions by policy objective? Or, I mean, I know they're probably both the same. Is that what we're being asked to respond to, as to whether those are actions that are satisfactory to move forward? I recognize that we'll have more specificity as time goes by. Is that what you're needing from us right now?
So the actions that are listed, column one, when we did the outreach for this project and had conversations with you and the Planning Commission and Task Force, these were the actions that seemed to rise to the top as ones to tackle in the near term. I think we're really just looking to see, we know that 1B and 1C in particular, we're already planning work on because we're obligated to. But of this, you know, obviously, we're going to be thin in terms of, you know, we can't work on all five of them at once. So we were just trying to get a sense of, of the five, are there any that you think also should be started on once we adopt this? Do you really just want us to focus on the first two and await additional direction as to when we should start the other three? Just trying to get some feedback there.
Well, have these been prioritized? In other words, is 1A more important than 1E?
No.
I mean, in terms of time and focus?
No, that's what we're asking from you. What priorities of the things that are listed in that column on the left-hand side, how should we prioritize those? I think Counselor Leahan had her hand up.
On the left-hand side of what page are we on?
Well, it's different for you than it is for us. So it's page 11, I believe, on the document.
Yes. It's the beginning of Section 4 of the draft.
The very beginning of Section 4. Section 4.
Okay, yeah. Okay, okay. 61 of 143 at the top.
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Linville?
Well, I think I recall from our last meeting that we were getting grant funding to do master planning for Frog Pond. Is that, what are the, what's the timeline for us getting that funding? And I thought it was kind of going to be maybe this summer to start doing that master planning. Am I correct about that?
The grant cycles are currently open now, and planning staff is working on applying for funding to begin doing that work.
And we have, it has been indicated that we're, we are a strong candidate to receive money without
Yeah.
firm commitment.
Do we know when that money would be coming from that grant cycle?
I'm hearing fall.
Fall?
Yes.
Okay. And so, that would, that would, that would relate specifically, more specifically to 1C in that category, it seems, to define the equitable housing approaches to new urban growth areas, correct?
Yes.
Yeah?
Also, maybe 1B?
Yes, they're both inoperated.
I guess, I guess I see 1A as being kind of an easy, well, I won't say that. I think we need to, I'm hoping that this plan can help guide us in doing that master planning for Frog Pond, and that that is right, you know, that's going to be coming along pretty quickly. And so I guess I would see 1B and 1C as being kind of right up there in terms of the priorities, so.
Counselor West?
I was, oh, hold on. I'm unmuted. Okay, sorry. I, when chairing this task force, it was great to be in there. It was a lot of great ideas from varying backgrounds and different people, and people that, and stakeholders. A few, just a couple things that really, like, stuck out into my mind about prioritizing. And, you know, it's already, gosh, it's, I know it wasn't that long ago, but it feels like a lifetime ago. But, sorry, my screen's going back. But when, for me, incorporating equitable housing needs, oh, wait, for me, 1A is in the appropriate place. the appropriate place. Exploring transit-oriented development around equitable housing, while the equitable housing is a little bit higher density, and being available and close to transit is key for it to being successful. And one, one thing that came up, Colin, I don't know if you guys already, you guys might already know this came up, is that there's a large, the city owns a large piece of property right there by the transit area, by Villabois. So not only is it close to Villabois, and it's close, it's not that far from like services like this grocery store and stuff, but it's right by transit and smart. And that, to me, just screams of like an awesome opportunity for the city to partner with somebody to develop some type of strategic housing right there that meets that goal of 1A. It just seems like that, that chariot, that ripe fruit right on the tree. So that, to me, is one that sticks out as a major priority. And another one that I know works, and I've seen work in the past in other situations, is that tax abatement piece. The one caution that I would have now regarding that is where we face with COVID-19 and the property taxes and funding essential services and funding source long-term for the city. So that, I don't know, we'd have to really look at that. That's what gives me pause a little bit with tax abatement. But at least for first-time homeowners or for people that are part of a specific program, it can provide some real relief initially for the first 10 years and allow people to really have a considerable amount more money in their pocket than to invest in some type of housing plan or property that meets our goals here. And for me, those two are the most intriguing for me, and they were talked about frequently within the task force, and many, even many of the builders and metro people specifically seem to really kind of jive and kind of able to kind of get behind those ideas. So I guess that's my initial thoughts on that implementation list. And maybe I missed something, but is the CET tax that you brought up, you need some decision from us or direction tonight on that? Am I correct?
As we work on refining the final draft, we're just trying to get a sense of, is this something that council wishes for us to begin pursuit of upon adoption of this plan?
It would be a down-the-road action.
Yep. But it does require some additional research.
Yeah, down-the-road, yeah. This is just the general framework as we get more specific and we delve into each of these program areas, then we would bring, you know, back specific recommendations. I think the ask from staff, is that something that you want us to start researching and bring more information to you on?
Have we seen that, I was a little bit in the packet, but have we seen, where have we seen that CET tax be successful in other areas? And where does that kind of idea originate from? I know since we talked a little about state governments or considering it in other governments. But my initial reaction when hearing about raising any taxes right now on any businesses...
It doesn't have to be right now. I want to be clear that we're not proposing that we do any of this right now. Okay.
I totally understand that, but I just kind of want to know the impact and like, it's hard to make a decision on even if that's a goal, if that, right now, is six months from now, to me, that's too soon as of a year from now, probably still too soon. So I know it's kind of a distant out there in the future, but I'm kind of, I guess I'm looking also for a little bit of more direction. Maybe you guys can talk to that more specifically on what the CET tax is and how the benefits of it and kind of, you know, address my thoughts around it.
That, that would be what we would propose. If you're interested in it, we would gather more information and bring it back. I know several cities around the state have a CET tax that they use for different purposes. So it's, it's a program, it's already been developed, it's being used in other cities. What we're saying is, if you like the idea, we can bring it back. Doesn't mean you need to pull the trigger on it, it just means we're gathering information, vetting it with you, and then you give us further direction. That's all we're asking for tonight. Not that you, not that you implement one.
Do we have a timeframe about it?
Not yet. So I can provide a little bit of context without spending a lot of time on it. It's been, historically, the CET grant was something that primarily went through Metro, our regional organization, and essentially on every building permit that's pulled in the city, there's a very, very small percentage that is essentially accumulated as the construction excise tax. So it's on the building permit, it's a very small percentage, it's a very small fee per building permit, but regionally acquires a lot of money. So actually, the way that we've paid for Frog Pond East master planning, or, excuse me, Frog Pond West master planning, and hopefully what will help to fund East and South planning, actually comes from construction excise tax that then gets put from the regional government out to locals in the form of community planning and development grants. I believe it was about four years ago when inclusionary zoning was being discussed at the state again and looking at removing the ban at the state level to inclusionary zoning in Oregon. And one of the tools that was looked at with inclusionary zoning was providing essentially some benefits. And in order to pay for benefits and programs that would be implemented at the local level, there's a need to be able to accumulate funds to be able to support an affordable housing program or a housing program in some way, shape, or form. And so that's essentially, through that legislation, construction excise taxes at the local level were essentially approved to be a part of that, to be able to help provide locals with an ability to acquire a constructionized excise tax on building permits and utilize it to fund their local affordable housing programs. So that has only been adopted as far, and Kim probably knows more about the specifics of how it's currently been utilized in the region, but I believe three or four cities have adopted it.
I believe it's at two, eight localities now. Some cities, handful of cities and a county or two.
And so really, the reason why we wanted to put it forth and ask whether it was a priority for us to do additional research and bring forward something that we could do at the local level is that, as we've done this research, a lot of these programs require funding to put them in place. So a lot of the priorities that the council has will require some amount of funding to implement some projects and some efforts, and very few resources exist at the local level. A lot of the resources that are outlined in the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan are federal or state or regional, and there aren't necessarily something that we control. So the CET is something that's locally controlled, and so we wanted to sort of elevate it in this conversation to get an understanding of what your preferred timeline for moving that forward would be. Is that something you'd want us to start bringing back to you and talking about specifics of in the next six months, year? Or is that something that maybe we'll consider in three to five years?
Okay. So we kind of need to give an answer to that. There's another question I'd like to get on the table, and Councilor Akrivol's waiting to speak also. Last meeting, we talked about the buildings that were in the concept proposal for town center redevelopment, and there was a lot of discussion about them being too short, too plain, not enough floors. One of the tools that's in this package we're not talking about as a possibility is the vertical housing tax credit program, which would potentially incentivize some private sector investment on that side. So that's another whole element that can be implemented locally without having to depend on restate or federal or that sort of thing. So I just kind of toss that out there because it seems to me to be relevant. Councilor Akrivol?
Thank you. I appreciate this is difficult because I think there's a lot of good ideas on this list, so trying to prioritize is difficult. The task force came up with some, some really good concepts, and staff has done good work on this. One item, when looking at, you know, the items 1A through 1E, 1E stands out to me, and so here's, here's another vote for, for another direction. But 1E is facilitate connections to partners and housing resources through city liaison. And when I'm looking at one of the overall goals of this work, which is to reduce displacement, you know, and as we've already discussed tonight, try to provide some stability for our city, which may be needed more deeply now. There are not that many specific action items that point to that goal of reducing displacement. However, this is one of them that was on the list side for possible immediate action. So I'm particularly interested in what the effects of 1E could have in bringing stability for some of our community members.
There's five items listed for implementation actions in a higher priority list on the second, all those labeled, you know, 1A through 1E. Does anyone feel like one of those does not belong in that more immediate list? Or has the staff pretty well got those isolated correctly with the work they've done with I'm not seeing any dissent so far. Okay, so everybody's okay with, with those, so maybe that helps staff somewhat. That list includes the 1A, potentially early project on the Smart Central ground for potential housing there. The piece that I think about is whether, if we were able to move expeditiously on that, whether we could benefit from the region's bond monies that are coming in from the recently implemented bond, and whether that would help us accomplish an objective both for our local community and for the region as a whole. And if so, I hate to forego that opportunity, is what I would say. So that would become a higher priority for me just because of those external factors.
And I do know that the first funding window is open for that, but there is a second funding window as well, so any work, what I'm hearing is any work we can do to position ourselves to be able to respond to that would be good.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm seeing mostly nodding heads. Councilor West, comment?
Just initially, like, I am not super comfortable moving it, moving forward as the CET as a priority right now. I don't think I'm ready to make that decision. I know, you're not asking for a decision, I know that. But I'm not, with knowing what's coming around the corner with, especially the businesses, I'm just not comfortable asking to institute another tax or the CE tax at this time. More information is fine, but that's my initial feelings right now.
So information six months out or something for the council on CET? Is that where we want to be or somewhere else?
Six months, two years, in my opinion.
Okay. Does that sound reasonable to the others? Councilor Leahan?
Yeah, I would just, the way I read the column 1, this is, these are things to initiate within two years.
Two years, yeah.
So I see all of those things as important within that timeframe. And I was going to follow on with Councilor Akrivol on 1E. I presume this has to do with partners like Northwest Housing Advocates?
Yeah.
And we have two, had, we were involved in perhaps more, but multiple housing projects with them, Creekside being the big one, and also Weidemann. I know from checking into those within the last 30 days, 45 days, certainly, there's a two- to three-year waiting list on those facilities. And those are, that's senior housing. Well, when a senior is in need of housing, two or three years to wait is, that's like a long, long time. And so we definitely have that need, and I know those projects take a while to get off the ground. So I think that is an important one to move forward, especially in this time of economic uncertainty. But I think all of them are appropriate in the next two years.
Okay. I'm seeing a couple nodding heads also. Other comments on that perspective? Staff, I don't know if we're being clear enough to give you assistance here or not.
We got what we need.
We got what we need. We will move forward with the final draft. Thank you.
All right. That sounds good. So, Mr. Cosgrove, we don't have much left for time. I don't know about jumping into that other topic. What's your preference?
Nancy, how long do you think yours would take?
I could probably do it in five minutes.
We could get Nancy out of the way in five minutes, if you don't mind starting the meeting at 7:02.
Well, I'm willing to listen to her. I don't know about getting her out of the way.
Okay.
Nancy's never in the way.
Fair enough.
Oh, yeah, sure. And where are they? Here we go. Oops. Okay, that's Tom's, you can close that one. A little out of practice. Here it is. That's it. Stop for a second. Yeah, sorry, sorry about that. I guess I'll move over, too. Good evening again, Mayor Knapp and city councilors. I'm going to quickly go through a presentation to give you a quick update on what's going on with the Beckman Bridge project. And we're in the, we're continuing to move forward on it, so I can come back another time if we want to spend, if this isn't enough time, I'd like to just run through it real quick to give you the latest and greatest. Now, what I did was in my PowerPoint, I have a lot of, some background I was going to fly through. However, I don't think I need to even touch that. If you guys have read it, it's also summarized in the staff report. So we've got goals of this, we've got the, why are we doing the project? We have a little history about the current infrastructure that's out there to manage flows. We have a little bit more reminders about the extent of that infrastructure to manage flows, to handle some of the cross-basin flows that occurred back in the 80s. And then the past work that's been done to date. We've done some work on identifying potential bridge alignment and what it's going to look like, very preliminary cost estimates. We've also looked at some detour options. And then we left you at the last meeting with thinking about, do we want to add 80 feet to the bridge to protect that really amazing oak tree out there? And then also, we're starting to look at, should we need to take the entire culvert out? We want to be careful about how we do that. There's a lot of implications in terms of the Beckman Creek Basin. So since then, we have done a preliminary tree survey on the property that's on the north side of Beckman Road that would be most impacted by the north side temporary road detour plan. And we recognize that this is probably something that everybody's going to be interested in, so we wanted to get a jumpstart on it. I gave you an inventory of the types of trees that are out there, so you have that now to consider as we're looking at detour options. The other thing that we've completed is we've done a fish passage assessment to make sure, you know, is this really the culvert that matters for the fish? Could there be something, something downstream that is inhibiting fish passage that would mean that this culvert is not the first barrier up from the Willamette River? And we did determine that this indeed looks, it does appear that the fish of interest are able, we don't have confirmation that they do make it up this far, but especially the Chinook salmon and some of the steelhead that are the ones that are most concerned to protect. But we do recognize, we do know now that the culvert is indeed a barrier for them getting any further upstream, which means that depending on how we scope... any further upstream, which means that depending on how we scope the project, we could invoke a truer event, which would require that we either turn, either convert the existing culvert into a fish-friendly culvert, which would allow passage, or we do build the bridge and take out the culvert that's there. And we've, we discussed, you know, fairly extensively at the last meeting about this kind of a big deal, especially in terms of cost. But it could end up being a really important environmental action. And then from ODFNW, Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, we have, I've met with them, and they have specific guidelines, criteria, that can guide us in terms of determining whether or not we do indeed need to remove the culvert for fish passage. And they're summarized in that slide that's up there right now. So a recommendation for next steps, and I might add that the Fish and Wildlife, ODFNW information is in the Oregon Administrative Rules, so we have specific guidelines. It is not particularly perfectly clear, which we would have to do some pretty good analysis in terms of how do they apply to this project. But the good news is there are some guidelines that we can follow. And then next steps, we are currently putting together a contract to do a culvert assessment. If we need to touch the culvert as part of this project, if it's deteriorated and the city council and staff decide that it's really important to work on the culvert, that will automatically trigger the fish passage requirements. So we figure like that's the next step. We have to find out what that culvert condition is. And then depending on that outcome, we might look at, looking at some volume estimations for if we decided to not take the culvert out. And then this is all helping us to refine the project scope and, most importantly, the budget so that we can develop a funding plan for you and then a project schedule. So upcoming for you will be looking at project budget. And we already discussed this evening, contracting approach, and then all the details we talked about in your last meeting in terms of bridge length, cross-section aesthetics, vertical grade, what detour are we going to pursue, et cetera. That's it. I think I made it in five minutes. Any questions?
Wow, very good. Questions from council? I think you got us all satisfied for the moment, from the sound of it.
And we'll be back. We'll want to make sure we keep you updated so that we can be working on the budget implications.
Right, 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 right. And throwing in on, on whether we have options on the fish passage question or whether it's really been decided for us?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. All right. That will do us for our work session. Is that right, Mr. Cosgrove?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are we going to move directly into council meeting? I should probably take a five-minute break here to give people a chance to readjust before we jump into the rest of, of an extended meeting.
The city attorney would like you to make that a two-minute break.
A two-minute?
Yes, sir. She's pressuring me to get the meeting rolling.
I have a question. Counselor West? So like, of course, the probability of a citizen actually coming into City Hall to testify during citizen concerns and other three minutes is probably not going to happen. Do citizens who are following us on Zoom here have the ability to ask questions or interact with us during that period?
Public comment.
During, they can have public comments on Zoom virtually.
They can email, they can Zoom in, but they have to be, the mayor will have to, will have to discern who's doing that during public comment time. So we will look and see who's in our virtual lobby and then we'll find out who's there for public comment.
Okay, I just had somebody ask me, and so I want, I didn't know how to answer that.
Yeah, they can do that.
Well, there was instructions that they, they needed to pre-register by 3 o'clock if they wanted to Zoom in.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm just being told by our IT staff that we do need five minutes in between sessions, so we're going to have to cut you loose for five minutes.
All right, let's do that now.
And you're going to have to reset your what?
They're resetting, the TV's resetting recordings, that's why we need five minutes.
Okay, we just need five minutes, Mayor.
Okay, we'll do, thank you.
I'll be right here to be logged out.
Just stay put.
Stay here, just, yeah, just, you can go away from your site, but don't disconnect.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.